Re-elected individuals and also our brand-new elected individuals, so if I can get Councilmember Krogman, Councilmember Sullivan, and Councilmember Kirby to please join me in the diocese. Please.
I want to introduce my wife, Terry, to everybody here. She's here to take pictures.
Hi.
Terry, remember, I have one of them as a photographer?
Yeah. Let's go ahead and start with you.
If you guys want to kind of...
We have to say hi.
...center where the podium is, then we'll get it on camera.
Okay.
Yeah, that works.
Okay. Go ahead, here is your right hand. Please, we'll do it part of the time, Terry. I solemnly swear...
I solemnly swear.
...to support the Constitution of the United States...
To support the Constitution of the United States.
...and of this state...
And of this state.
...and to discharge faithfully...
And to discharge faithfully.
...the duties devolving upon me...
The duties devolving upon me.
...as city council member...
As city council member.
...for the city of La Sueur...
For the city of La Sueur.
...to the best of my judgment...
To the best of my judgment.
...and ability.
And ability.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Mayor, if I could add you... reach him to the mic, that would be great.
Councilmember Krogman. I solemnly swear...
I solemnly swear.
...to support the Constitution of the United States...
To support the Constitution of the United States.
...and of this state...
And of this state.
...and to discharge faithfully...
And to discharge faithfully.
...the duties devolving upon me...
The duties devolving upon me.
...as city council member...
As city council member.
...for the city of La Sueur...
For the city of La Sueur.
...to the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations, Councilmember Krogman. Welcome to the panel again. I solemnly swear...
I solemnly swear.
...to support the Constitution of the United States...
To support the Constitution of the United States.
...and of this state...
And of this state.
...and to discharge faithfully...
And to discharge faithfully.
...the duties devolving upon me...
The duties devolving upon me.
...as city council member...
As city council member.
...for the city of La Sueur...
For the city of La Sueur.
...to the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations, welcome aboard. Thank you. Time to go to work, gentlemen. Welcome, everybody. Hopefully, everybody had a good holiday season and Happy New Year to everybody. Go ahead and start off with the approval of the agenda. Can I go ahead and get a motion, please?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We now move on to our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of this meeting. The items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. On tonight's consent agenda, we have declare official depositories and declare the official newspaper. Can I go ahead and get a motion to go ahead and approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Public comment. Public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Persons wishing to make a comment must sign up in advance of the meeting, on a she-provided, and identify themselves by providing a name and address. Tonight, we have Mr. Jack Roberts, who wants to go ahead and discuss commission appointments. Mr. Roberts, would you like to step up, please?
Good evening. My name is Jack Roberts, 725 Auto Road. I saw that tonight y'all are going to be doing the commission appointments, and I put in an application for three or four, to be on three or four different commissions. And I just want to reiterate that my preference is a planning commission. I am a real estate attorney, and that's where my interest lies, and hopefully, I could put those skills to use to serve the commission and the council of the city. But if the board sees, or the council sees fit to put me elsewhere, that's fine. I'm on board and on commission. That's okay too. I just want to get here and reiterate my preference, and appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Roberts, and also thank you very much for taking the time to go ahead and make yourself available for one of our potential fillings for various boards, commissions, committees for the city of La Sueur. Okay. Anybody else in the public like to address city council? Hearing none. Go ahead and entertain a motion to go ahead and close the public comment portion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. We now move on to our regular agenda. Tonight, the first item on the dock of the Sixth Alpha, which is the La Sueur Board Commission and City Council Appointments.
Mayor Hague, members of the city council, I am here tonight to help facilitate this discussion. The first thing we'll be looking at are city council appointments, and I've received basically a spreadsheet from the mayor, kind of indicating who he is recommending you put into the various spots that council members need to fill. So I will go through this, and after this is done, I think we have a discussion about it. If we feel it's okay, we'll let a motion, and we'll pass this, and then we'll move on to the board and commission appointments. So I'll just go through this. Council President, Noel Krogman, Airport Commission, Noel Krogman, EDA, we have two individuals on there. What's being proposed is Marvin Sullivan and Sean Kirby. Fire Commission, Marvin Sullivan. Planning Commission, Noel Krogman. The Zoning Board of Adjustments, we have two individuals, Mark Huntington and Sean Kirby. One thing, if Sean is appointed to this, he'll have to go through some zoning board of adjustments training. It's not very long. So I was just making sure that you're trained in for that position. Comprehensive Plan Action Team, what is being proposed is that Mayor Hague and myself co-chair that. Moving on, this gets a little bit smaller, but Minnesota River Valley Public Utilities Commission, we have three appointments, Johnny Fableys, Mark Huntington, and Marvin Sullivan. Those are unchanged from last year. Minnesota River Valley Transit, we have two appointments and an alternate. The two primaries are proposed to be Mark Huntington and Marvin Sullivan, and the alternate is Benjamin Roloff. Personnel and Budget, there are three council members on that. Being proposed is Greg Hague, Johnny Fableys, and Noel Krogman. The Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee, there are two council representatives on that, Benjamin Roloff and Johnny Fableys are being proposed. Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, there's a one rep and then an alternate. The main representative is proposed to be Noel Krogman, and the alternate, Benjamin Roloff. And then the Community Education Advisory Council is proposed to be Sean Kirby. Continuing on, the Highway 169 Coalition, there are two, or one spot and an alternate. Mark Huntington would be the main contact for that, and Benjamin Roloff would be the alternate. The Municipal, or Minnesota Municipal Power Agency, there's a main and an alternate. Those two are proposed to be Noel Krogman, and the alternate is myself, Jasper Prueble. Region Nine Development Commission, the main contact would be Benjamin Roloff, and the alternate would be Greg Hague. The Bridgeview La Sueur Medical Center Board is proposed to be Sean Kirby, and the Housing and Redevelopment Authority is proposed to be Mark Huntington. I believe that is it. So what we're looking for, and I'll advance this a little bit. So we're looking for motion number one, if we want to have a discussion, but ultimately, we want to approve the appointment of various city council members and staff to positions defined by the mayor. That's where we want to get to, so I'll leave it for discussion if there's any questions. You should probably be addressed to the mayor.
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and just start out by saying that for the most part, it's a carryover from the last term. Of course, with Councilmember Johnson no longer part of our city council, Councilmember Kirby will be fulfilling his obligations for the most part. And there were a couple of slight tweaks. I wanted to make sure that when we look at everybody across the board, everybody's pretty much got the same amount of assignments. Now, the other thing I wanted to make sure that everybody understands is that when we have a primary and an alternate, I expect that the primary and alternate will be in contact with one another, just in case, for example, if the primary cannot make it to one of these meetings, so that then, of course, the alternate will go. In some cases, there are, there's transportation reimbursement involved with some of the different travels and things of that nature, so just make sure you guys keep a good line of communication. Hopefully, I didn't put too much on any one person's plate. If anybody has any issues about any of these things, this would be the time to go ahead and address it. Anybody? Okay. Go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the appointment of various city council members and staff to positions defined by the mayor.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just one vote.
Please, Councilmember Fableys.
For any of my EDA members that were out there, I am greatly going to miss being on that board, or on that commission. I am going to greatly miss being on the life program. Marvin Sullivan, I believe, is the right person to handle that. I understand why for other appointment for me, and why this had to happen, and still in this way. But it was one of my favorite things to be on. I think you're going to have a good time with it. They're great people, and it's the one thing you truly feel like you're making huge differences, and you can see those differences. It really kind of fun, so thank you very much.
Well, I certainly do appreciate that, and you served EDA well, Councilmember Fableys, and I look forward to having Councilmember Sullivan do what he can do in regards to our EDA, and working with Samantha Damasio, I think you've been having a very good time. You've got some bigger fish to fry now, like going on into the Personnel and Budget Committee, and one of the things that I was very concerned about is that Councilmember Krogman, or Councilmember Johnson can tell you this as well, we have an awful lot of meetings drawn in the course of the year, and you being somebody that is self-employed, I didn't want to put too much on your plate, so hopefully, you understand why I made that change.
Perfectly understood. Thank you, sir.
And in regards to some of these other types of committees, boards, and commissions, also want to make sure that everybody understands that if, for whatever reason, we cannot make it to those meetings, make sure, let me know, okay? Somehow, some way, we got to make sure we have representation, everything. Fair enough, and we'll try to see what we can do in regards to MVRT, if that becomes an issue. Minnesota River Valley Transit Authority, we want to make sure that we can have both of our representatives there, Councilmember Huntington. I'm guessing that quorum is four in that particular committee?
Uh, how many are there? There's... yes.
Okay.
You were right.
So it's very important that we make sure we can show up, so in case there's some actionable items that can be dealt with. Otherwise, if we don't have quorum, as we all know, a meeting doesn't exist. Okay? So the next thing we'll move on to now is the board...
We can vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you very much, Councilmember Krogman. I had my notes here, but I forgot to write down the vote board. Okay, let's move on now to our board and commission appointments.
Mayor Hague, members of the city council, we've been marketing soliciting applications for various boards and commissions for probably about the last three months, with the idea that 2019 will bring forward. There are some terms that are ending. People are reapplying for those terms, but we also have quite a few new faces that we received applications for. So what we have, our Airport Commission, we currently have three vacancies. We received no applications for that. What I'm recommending is that in the near future, we bring this up at city council and see how we'd like to proceed. It's listed in our city code, our Airport Commission. If we want to change anything with that, we would need to do it via ordinance. So we have received no applications for that, so right now, we'll have to figure out what we're going to do with that in the near future. Planning Commission, we have received five applications. Dan Ryerson, he's a new name. I think he's fairly new to town. Teresa Tebby, she was an existing member, or is an existing member, was. Jack Roberts, who is in front of you tonight, who spoke earlier. Ryan Scherer, he was on there seeking reappointment, and Lyle Olson. There are four seats open for Planning Commission, so keep that in mind. I'll move on to the next ones, and then I'll let you guys kind of determine how we want to proceed, if we want to talk about the Planning Commission, EDA, et cetera, what order. But what we're looking for is, and I have it outlined in the, at the end of this presentation, about a motion for each of the terms that are available and who we want to appoint for that term. One thing I will note, a question came up from Councilmember Krogman about if we are able to adjust the term and dates, and we aren't, just to be able to do that as a council, we need to do that through an ordinance, and what that ordinance will just look like is that city council can adjust term and dates from time to time, something like that. So if that's something we want to do in the near future, we probably should. I would recommend it. Planning Commission, for example, we have three people with their terms ending in 2019, and then four people with their terms ending in 2021, I believe.
It was the other way around. That's okay?
Oh, other way around. So for the Economic Development Authority, there are two spots open for that. We have five applications, Ron Morrell, Jesse Wenich, Dan Ryerson again, Jack Roberts, and Daniel Mahoney, who Daniel submitted his application after the packet had gone out. So I did include that in an email. If you have questions about that, let me know. And then we have Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee. We have one term ending, and it's Randy Snow's term. He has reapplied. And then we have another term, or another position that's vacant due to a resignation, and we've received another application from Cormac Dunham, who, if you remember, he was appointed in the beginning and then resigned due to some personal things. And then last, but not least, is the Charter Commission. We have one vacancy on there, and we have one application from Jack Roberts. So moving forward, you can see what we're looking for is just a motion appointing the various applicant to the vacant term ending, and I have all the end term dates on here. So if we want to start with EDA, we can. Otherwise, I have all the necessary motions outlined here for the various other boards and commissions. So I'll leave it to this group to discuss how they want to proceed, and I'll just help and assist.
I think the best thing to do is to probably treat them one by one, and we've all had an opportunity to go ahead and review the applications by all the candidates. I'd like to go ahead and publicly say to the entire city, thank you to everybody that applied. We are always looking for volunteers, so please keep the applications coming. We never know whether or not we're going to lose a particular individual on one of our boards, commissions, or committees throughout the year. Also, put down all your various interests. You know, it's perfectly fine to have more than one item, like somebody might be interested in possibly EDA, Economic Development Authority, and also maybe the Airport Commission. That's fine, because we have about fifteen boards, commissions, and committees that we have to fill. So again, thank you to everybody that took the time to go ahead and step up to the plate. It's very much appreciated by all of us here in the city of La Sueur. With that said, we know who our five individuals are from, or we have, what, four individuals for the EDA? Okay. Is there anybody that'd like to go ahead and present on in regards to any of these individuals? Make a motion for a particular individual?
I would like to make a motion.
Okay. Councilmember Fableys.
My choices, I would have Jesse, and I'm going to say the name, Wenich, and Daniel Mahoney. My reasoning on that is, EDA, after being on EDA and knowing what the dynamic is there, EDA has a large loss with having myself. Don't take that wrong. And John Dupree, both being business owners and/or entrepreneurs, which with the work that EDA does and the life rev program, having that perspective, one geared toward entrepreneurs, is extremely important. And I'd like to see somebody on there that has that background. And then Daniel Mahoney, through EDA, the last few meetings that we've had, I've met both he and his wife at these meetings. They are in a particularly demographic that we're constantly trying to reach through EDA. We seem to have, for the Downtown Master Plan and the Comp Plan, when we have these meetings, normally, we're getting folks that were going to be in the late forties to all the way up, and we weren't getting enough in the lower age brackets with families. And to see these folks in there and have them being outspoken at these meetings, I think is something that's needed on EDA. Also, his, Daniel's past work as volunteers for the Peace Corps, and... yeah, well, that's what I've got. That's fine. Thank you.
Anybody else have anybody that'd like to go ahead and speak about?
I will, please.
Councilmember Krogman.
As I, as I look at, one of the problems we have here, gentlemen, is the balance. Somebody applies for one and another, and we can't put them all on one, so we have to kind of think this through. But I would advocate, or at least suggest, that Dan Ryerson has great qualifications for being on the EDA, which we're talking about, correct? Okay, this gentleman's been on the city council. You look at the things that he's been involved with, it strikes me that he does not meet the same demographic, obviously, that was just outlined for a younger person. But this gentleman would, I think, be another candidate for that, although I fully understand bringing younger people in. I would note that the number of years that people have lived here might also be a factor that we want to think, think about, so I'll leave it at that.
Just to piggyback on that statement...
Councilmember Sullivan.
Just to piggyback on that statement, it looks like Dan Ryerson also applied for the Planning Commission as well, or the other two that Councilmember Fableys recommended only apply for the EDA. And those two would be my recommendation as well, for similar reasons, those two, my recommendation.
And again, like I said earlier, we have, we have multiple individuals that have applied for multiple positions, so in the case of Mr. Ryerson as an example, if he wouldn't happen, make it on EDA, there's a good chance he'd make it onto something else that he's asked to serve on. So we can't necessarily take five individuals and get two people. You know, somebody's not going to get it, so, you know, we're very glad that we have this type of a problem, quite frankly, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're mindful of what EDA's responsibility is moving forward. We certainly want to understand what the demographics are, and we certainly want to understand the whole idea of the entrepreneurial spirit too, especially with our connection with the life program. So I think that we've got some outstanding candidates here. Mr. Morrell, for example, is somebody too that I think would serve the city very well. He was also somebody that had run for city council and didn't quite make it this particular time, but we're faced with a situation where we have to make some decisions, and right now, I guess maybe the best thing to do is to go ahead and treat them individually. We'll go through the list. I hear that we have Mr. Mahoney, Mr. Wenich, and Mr. Ryerson, that you guys as a body are recommending that we put their names in the hat for these two positions. Is that correct?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I'd suggest we simply take them one at a time, in the order that they've been brought up.
Okay. Councilor, how about for Mr. Ronald Morrell?
I was saying if they were spoken for, but that's okay.
Oh, I thought you wanted to go through the whole list. Okay.
I mean, we do have a motion to appoint Jesse Wenich and Daniel Mahoney.
Was that a motion, or was that... I thought it was just a discussion.
It was.
No.
It was a motion.
It was a motion.
It was a motion, yes. So there is a motion on the table. Should have a second before we discuss, but we can't.
Okay, so we're looking for, we have a motion for Mr. Wenich and Mr. Mahoney. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have to clarify which term is which, since they're two different names?
Yes, I would. I would appreciate that.
That's why I'd suggest they be separate.
Okay, exactly.
Because we have one that would be fulfilling a position that would take us to December 31 of 2019, and the other one would take us to December 31 of 2023, so to Councilmember Krogman's point, I think we do have to treat these as individual motions. So are you willing to go ahead and retract your motion?
No, I would, I would move my motion forward with the dates, with the time expirations, and Daniel Mahoney on the 2019, and Jesse on the 2023.
I would second that motion.
So we have a motion, a second. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, again, I'm going to, I don't want to necessarily object to this, but we put the two together, takes the third one out, you want to vote for one of these two. Think about that. If somebody wanted Ryerson, you'd have to vote no against somebody you may want in. That's why I said it should be separate.
Yeah.
I'm willing to proceed with it the way it is, because I don't think it'll make any difference.
But I definitely understand your point of order on that, and that's why we really have to treat them as individual.
So we can't necessarily take five individuals and get two people, you know, somebody's not gonna get it. So, you know, we're very glad that we have this type of a problem, quite frankly. But at the same time, we want to make sure that we're mindful of what EDA's responsibility is moving forward. We certainly want to understand what the demographics are. And we certainly want to understand the whole idea of the entrepreneurial spirit too, especially with our connection with the Life Program. So I think that we've got some outstanding candidates here. Mr. Morel, for example, is somebody too that I think would serve the city very well. He was also somebody that had run for City Council and didn't quite make it this particular time. But we're faced with a situation where we have to make some decisions. And right now, I guess maybe the best thing to do is to go ahead and treat them individually. We'll go through the list. I hear that we have Mr. Mahoney, Mr. Winish, and Mr. Ryerson. That you guys as a body are recommending that we put their names in the hat for these two positions, is that correct?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I'd suggest we simply take them one at a time in the order that they've been brought up.
Counselor, how about for Mr. Ronald Morel?
I, I was saying if they were spoken for, but that's okay.
Oh, I thought you wanted to go through the whole list, okay.
If I may, we do have a motion to appoint Jesse Wedge and Daniel Mahoney.
Was that a motion or was that, I thought it was just a discussion.
It was, it was a motion, yes. So there is a motion on the table. Should have a second before we discuss, but we can't.
Okay, so we're looking for, we have a motion for Mr. Winish and Mr. Mahoney, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have to clarify which term is which since they're two different days?
Yes, I would, I would appreciate that.
That's why I'd suggest they be separate.
Okay. Exactly, yeah.
Because we have one that would be fulfilling a position that would take us to December thirty first of 2019 and the other one would take us to December thirty first of 2023. So to Counselmember Fallowies' point, I think we do have to treat these as individual motions. So are you willing to go ahead and retract your motion?
No, I would, I would move my, my motion forward with, with the dates, with the time expirations. And Daniel Mahoney on the 2019 and Jesse on the 2023.
I would second that motion.
So we have a motion, a second. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, again, I'm gonna, I don't want to necessarily object to this, but we put the two together, takes the third one out, you want to vote for one of these two, think about that. If somebody wanted Ryerson, you'd have to vote no against somebody you may want in. That's why I said they should be separate. I'm willing to proceed with it the way it is because I don't think it'll make any difference.
But I, I definitely understand your point of order on that and that's why we really have to treat them as individual, one at a time. So perhaps we can modify the motion, Counselmember Fallowies, to do it one at a time?
So I understand this, I'm going to choose one person and put a nomination in. And in that, I'm going to make a nomination and for the time expiration, yes? Okay, Daniel Mahoney, my, I'd like to make a motion for Daniel Mahoney for the 2019 term expiration.
Okay, we have a motion for Mr. Mahoney for the 2019 term expiration, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. And now you can go ahead and make your motion for Mr. Winish, if you'd like, please.
I would like to make my, a motion for Jesse Winish for the 2023 expiration.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Economic Development Authority welcomes Mr. Mahoney and Mr. Winish to the EDA, thank you very much. City Administrator Group, or what's next on our agenda?
Uh, next we have Planning Commission appointments and there are four of them, one for 2019 and then three for 2021. I will go back to the available applicants, Dan Ryerson, Teresa Tebby, Jack Roberts, Ryan Scher, and Lyle Wilson.
Okay, same process, gentlemen. Somebody would like to go ahead and introduce a particular individual, Counselmember Solomon?
I'd like to actually just start by making a motion for Ryan Scher for one of the twenty-one, year twenty-one terms. Um, just that I feel like he's been an available asset to that board, he's been on it now for some time. And he was also running for City Council, I think he's got the best interest in what we do here.
I would second the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for Ryan Scher. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried.
I would like to nominate Teresa Tebby to the twenty-one ending term.
I would second that.
That was for the 2021 term?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, is there any additional discussion?
Discussion on that. Been in a number of meetings with Teresa over the last, over the last few months through EDA and, and, well, a few others. And there's been an amazing transformation in the Planning Commission and she is a, has become a great advocate of talking about what, what the, uh, planning and zoning, uh, what it means to the expansion of, of our town and for the betterment of our town. And, and having a person that is, that is willing to be public and strong about, about that is very important, I fully support that.
So we have a motion and a second for Teresa Tebby, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I would like to make a nomination of Mr. Jack Roberts. Uh, he's a, uh, he's an attorney that deals specifically in the area of real estate, which would be a huge thing for our Planning Commission because of all the various issues that come up when it comes to planning. And he's also been somebody that's been coming to meetings, both City Council and Planning Commission this past year, and I think he's had the opportunity to kind of see what he's gonna be getting himself into. And I think that his expertise would be certainly something that the Planning Commission and the City of La Sura could benefit from.
What term are we looking at?
We're looking at the 2021 term.
I would second that.
Okay. Any additional discussion?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I would concur, I think I'd be a really good member for this commission, having served on it as a non-voting member. I would note that he also is the only applicant for the Charter Commission and we're gonna have to fill that. And I wonder if, out of protocol, to ask if we'd do both?
Well, as it...
Without him speaking, his head was shaking.
As it turned out, that was something that I saw too. And again, looking at his legal hat and his expertise that comes along with that, the conversations already been, I've already had that conversation that if he, if he would, if he was to get elected into our Planning Commission, would he also be interested in perhaps representing the city on our Charter Commission? Because they're both something that requires an awful lot of legal expertise. And I think that he would be a, a huge, a huge player for both of these particular commissions. And I think that based on what he told me, he'd be able to go ahead and serve both of these rather well because he is somebody that's self-employed and so on.
Did you have, did you happen by chance to ask him if he would look at all three positions on the Airport Commission?
That's great, of course, we're gonna have to change the charter, I'm guessing early ordinance in regards to the Airport Commission, depending on how it's gonna pan out according to what City Administrator Prue goes, because of the lack of participation with that particular commission. So we have a motion and a second for Mr. Jack Roberts, is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Congratulations, Jack, welcome aboard to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, one more opening.
This would be the 2019?
This would be the 2019 term, yes.
I would nominate Ryan Scher.
We already did Ryan Scher.
Oh, did we?
Yeah, he was the first one that we did.
Oh.
For the 2021 term.
Dan Ryerson.
Dan Ryerson?
That's what I meant to say.
Do you have anything you could tell us, Counselmember Huntington, in regards to Mr. Ryerson?
No, basically his expertise and his application, it seems quite qualified for that job.
I'd love to return.
Yes, I'd love to return.
And a bad City Council member?
Yeah, serves the City of Excelsior for six years. Uh, is there somebody that's willing to go ahead and make a second on that?
I would second that motion.
Okay, thank you, Counselmember Roloff. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of Mr. Dan Ryerson to the 2019 expiration for the Planning Commission? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. City Administrator Prue, will we move on to our next board commissioner?
All right, so the next two get a little easier because there are only two applicants for each one and there are only two vacancies. Well, for this one, there's one vacancy for the Charter Commission. So there are two, you have to look at the term, the term dates for this as well and we appreciate if you designate 2020 or 2021. So there are two, Cormac Dunham and Randy Snow for the, our package.
Okay. So council members, do we have somebody that'd like to go ahead and speak on behalf of either these individuals and make preference to either the 2021 or the 2020 term?
I'd make a motion for Randy Snow to take the 2021 term, just because he's currently on the commission. And I think they're both great candidates.
I would second that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we're looking at Randy Snow for the 2020 term, 2021 term, that's right. Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. In regards to Mr. Cormac Dunham, I take it that we're looking at the 2020 term then?
I'd make a motion for him to fill the 2020 term.
I would second that.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried, City Administrator Prue.
All right, last but not least is the Charter Commission appointment. We have one application, Jack Roberts. This term ends in 2019. Just a reminder, City Council technically can't appoint to this. We make a recommendation to the District Court Judge who then appoints the individual. There is one vacancy, recently we passed the ordinance amending the charter, changing the charter from fifteen members to nine. Uh, we have eight members right now. Uh, if, if Mr. Roberts is appointed, he would be the ninth and his term would go through 2019. Uh, typically what we do is once they're on the charter, if they meet the end of their term, they will have the ability to indicate if they want to remain on the charter. Oh, go ahead.
Just a quick question, are you sure on the nineteen expiration? It looks like in our packet it says 2020.
Yeah, I was just gonna say the same thing on that.
Yeah, let me just double check.
Vacancies for the twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one.
Give me one minute, I'll, I'll confirm that. So, right, in the packet it is incorrect, on the screen it is correct, so it does expire in 2019. Uh, this was Jeff Kirkow, his resignation, this is for his seat. So it is 2019.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion for Jack Roberts to fulfill that slot.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second for Mr. Jack Roberts for the term to expire for the Charter Commission December thirty first of 2019. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried. Thank you so much, sir, for taking your time to go ahead and help the city out, we very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, there was a, in the packet, there was a chart, you wanna call it that, or a table or different appointments for 2018, 2019. I would note that under the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, past mayor, Broder was listed, however, I was the representative last year.
Right, right.
So there's a mistake. This is history, you want to get it right.
That is for the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, yeah, that was actually Counselmember Roelke for 2018. Thank you for bringing that to my attention, I did see that on there and I forgot to send you an email about that. Okay, so we're all done now with our appointments, various commissions, boards, and committees. Again, a huge shout out to everybody that took the time to go ahead and apply for these positions. Please keep the applications coming because like I said, we never know if we're gonna have somebody that for whatever reason runs into a health concern or a job transfer, whatever it may be. We always like to have a pool of people available so that we don't have to go through the situation that we did this past year by having some vacancies and we certainly don't want to do that. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to sixth parable, which is the kinetic leasing, the capital lease approval. City Administrator Prue?
Mayor Hane, members of City Council. Uh, in our 2019 budget, that was approved on December tenth of last year, uh, in our capital improvement plan and in the budget document itself, uh, we have a series of items that have been indicated that we're gonna be putting onto a lease program. And the way that this works, you can kind of go through the process that we went through and in order to get those items onto the lease, we have to go through, um, the same purchasing policy that we have right now with the city, with the gain quotes. Um, so kinetic leasing, I put there a little marketing material, they're part of the Minnesota Cooperative Purchasing Connection, which is the state bid, uh, process. So they're, they're in there and they, they offer very competitive rates as far as what the annual interest rate is on those and we'll go into the, the, the term of this in a little bit more detail. So 2019 budget has defined, or identified these various items for purchase through capital lease. Um, in, in the marketing material goes into why this is a benefit, but a couple, three items that really pop out and affect us as a city are, we're not subject to legal debt limitations. There's lower transaction costs compared to bonds. Um, for example, for the transaction for this to occur was five hundred dollars for, um, like a, a, a bond transaction of one point seven million dollars would be twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. So there's quite a bit of savings there as far as the transaction costs. And the big thing for us as a city is it gives us more financial flexibility in the future. Uh, we have more ability to adapt with this as opposed to if we could do an equipment certificate. What I wanted to do with this is just make sure that the approval process for each piece of equipment is defined for the City Council. What I'll be asking for at the end of this is one motion to approve the process and one motion to approve the resolution that's attached in the, in the packet. Um, so what the process will entail is that whenever the City of La Sura city staff would like to purchase this, purchase an item that's identified in that table, exhibit A, which some of the things, I fully admit, do not, aren't that clear, so I've kind of clarified what each department would be getting with this because, um, through our quote, quote process, they haven't broken down by vendor and there's some things that are, that are connected or that are combined. So what will happen is city staff will bring forward what's called a, a fund dispersment request and that goes to kinetic, but before it goes to kinetic, we're gonna bring it forward to City Council. Uh, likely what I'll do, because we've talked about these things that are in the capital improvement plan, they're defined, we'll put them on the consent agenda. If at all, City Council, you guys want to talk about this in more detail, feel free to pull them off. If it's just that we're talking about every single one, every time we bring something forward, we'll just move to regular agenda items. But these are things that are defined, um, you know, they're not likely going to exceed if, I'll talk a little bit about that too, but, um, they can't exceed what we have in here for quotes right now. They can, let's say something happens where a piece of equipment, something was forgotten, we would have to use, um, operating budget to purchase those things, but what we have in the lease is what we have in the lease, we can't modify, add things to it, it's, it's defined, it's a, it's a doc, it's a contracted document. So, um, you'll see a document, basically it'll be a request form and then you'll see the invoice for the piece of equipment. Most items that are on here are state bid items, so for our purchasing policy, we only need to get, not even one quote, it's just repurchased about the state bid. Um, things that you'll see like the, the City Hall HVAC office, that type of thing. We've received a quote from a local vendor, uh, you'll see its price, builders. Once we get to actually doing that, we will receive multiple quotes from multiple, um, multiple contractors in, in the area and that number might change. Um, you know, we have a, we have one quote that we know is at forty thousand dollars and maybe we'll get a quote that's less. So we'll, we'll follow our purchasing policy, uh, for all of these items. Uh, but once it's approved by City Council, staff will then facilitate the rest of the process, finalizing the acquisition of the equipment or the project. So purchase documentation, that's the biggest thing that I, I want to make sure it's clear because the way this is set up, it could be easy to not necessarily have a conversation at City Council level about what's being purchased. And I want to make sure that every piece of item, every piece of equipment or project that's identified in this, you guys look at and it's documented in the minutes of, of the meeting. So, uh, that's why we want to have a, a formal motion, either consent or, or a regular agenda item, showing in the minutes that something was approved for X amount. The invoices for each item will be attached to all of the City Council packets for future reference. So somebody wants to go back and look at what a front end loader costs, you know, they can, they can do a search and we can, they can find that information, it'll all be included. Um, because it's not, this isn't typical or this isn't the way our standard dispersments will work because we will only see in our dispersments the lease payment itself, the lump sum lease payment, not the individual items in our dispersment. So it's important that it's documented somewhere in the, in the public record in case we need to go back and look at it in the future. So that's the major intent of, of this, is just to make sure that, um, everybody's okay with the process at which we, we acquire the, these, this equipment and these projects. Um, if there's additional steps that you as a council would like to see, uh, we can definitely incorporate those things. I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. So I'll go through a little bit about the rates and the terms of this, of lease. Uh, the rate that was locked in is four point zero five percent. Uh, we had to do some maneuvering to, uh, lock in this rate prior to the Federal Reserve raising the interest rate. So this is right now below prime rate as far as APR goes. It's a seven-year term. The first payment is due on January 1st, 2020. You'll see that in the amortization schedule. What you will see is that payment coming through our dispersments around December 15th. Depending on if we have two council meetings in December or just one, it would be either on that first or second council meeting in December. At the end of the seven years, we have the right to purchase the equipment for $1, the end of the term. A total lease amount of all the items in there is just under $1.7 million and our annual payment is $280,607. And this has all been budgeted. It's in there, it's in our capital improvement plan, capital equipment plan fund for 2019. And we'll have to incorporate it into the future.
City Administrator Prue, if you would, I know that we spent an awful lot of time in the Personnel and Budget Committee talking about what the differences would be in regards to going ahead and bonding as opposed to doing an actual purchase and of course then the capital lease. Does everybody understand exactly what we're all talking about here and why we're looking at using this type of purchasing in the future?
I do have just-
Councilmember Kirby.
One question, is there, for whatever reason, I can't foresee what reason would come up. Is there any penalties for dating out of this lease early if we were refinanced?
There aren't any penalties. They would take ownership and then they would have a right to any difference in it. So we would potentially pay the difference in what the equipment's worth and what's left on the lease. So that's what, I guess, one of the downfalls would be. Is that we were still on the hook for it. But because of the way it's set up and our lower interest rate, we likely will have equity in those machines. The project stuff is a little bit different because we're not going to be able to give up our HVAC system or our conference room. So that's a little different and they understand that, the Kinetic Leasing Group understands that. Hopefully, that doesn't happen. But yeah, there are, so there's more flexibility with this than if we would do an equipment certificate because that's essentially selling debt to a big group of people. Or whoever ends up buying it, it can be a variety of different countries. We're obligated to that no matter what, no matter if the equipment is functioning or not. Whereas if the lease, we have at least some equity in the machine that we can use. In some cases, we might be ahead of the amortization schedule. So we might, the piece of equipment might be worth more than what is left on it at the end of the lease or mid-lease. So we have flexibility. It won't affect our debt or our bond rating if we do default because it's not an official bonded debt. So those are things to look at. Now, we're not looking to default on anything. I think we're in good financial standing to do it. But, you know, our bond rating is something that really affects what our future rates are. And we'll go through a bonding, a bond rate process again in 2020, 2021, somewhere around there. So, and one thing I just wanna, this isn't something that we're gonna be doing every year. This is kind of a one-time thing. We're not gonna be, you're not gonna be seeing a capital lease again next year or the year after. This is for something to kinda get us caught up with some of our aging equipment so that our staff can actually do some of the things that they're expected to do. You know, one of the examples is our Streets and Parks Department, there's a lot of items on there. And things like our street sweeper, it just doesn't work very well. It's very old, dilapidated. It doesn't serve the community very well at all. So it's something, and you'll see some of these items are very expensive and we couldn't purchase them with reserve funds and things like that, so.
And are they able to adjust this pretty well if for whatever reason, one piece of equipment, we wanted to get rid of it or downsize and then credit the account or something? They're able to split yours with you on this, maybe?
We could, you know, there's some flexibility. And likely what'll happen is that the quotes that we have will actually come in under what our total amount is. So there'll be a balance at the end that we can put towards the principal payment. So that'll lower our payments overall. So the payment likely at, if we extend all the funds, will be the number that I indicated before. But if there's anything left over, that'll just go towards the principal and that'll buy that down. But yeah, there is, I mean, if we wanna downgrade or change a piece of equipment, we can definitely do that through them.
Mr. Mayor, we got some other families.
Okay. You stepped into the question that I was going to have by saying that we wouldn't be seeing these leases, you know, every two years or anything. From the list that you've got, it's pretty extensive. So my assumption at this point is, is that your team members have gone through and basically went through everything we have.
Correct, yeah. So Public Services Director mostly has, and you'll see a lot of these are public services related, has went through and prioritized things for replacement. Those are, everything's included in the capital equipment plan, capital improvement plan, there's items in there. It's hard to match up what exhibit A is in our capital equipment improvement plan. So that's why I wanted to go through all of these items, just to make sure everybody knows exactly what they're for.
Okay. I have three questions.
Councilmember Grob.
Three areas. Would you speak to maintenance or just simply answer probably this one? We are, are we or are we not responsible for the maintenance on these pieces of equipment?
We are responsible. In some cases, they have maintenance built into the price. So for our street sweeper, if you remember, that was approved for us to put the order in in 2018 to lock in the 2018 price. What we have with that is a seven-year maintenance plan that they take care of all of the normal maintenance during that period. For like our plow truck and our front-end loader, we'll have similar packages to that. And we'll let staff determine what makes sense for somebody else to maintain, some of the larger items versus some of the stuff we can do internally. Our street sweeper, for example, has a system in it where you can grease desserts, but all in one spot. So you can grease one spot. They have things like auto greasers and things like that that are built in. So there's maintenance enhancements where we don't have to do as much either with some newer equipment. But it's something that if available, we're gonna go after it so that we make sure that we're not spending the time maintaining it and it's done to factory specs.
Normally with purchase of pieces of equipment, there could be anything from a short to a long warranty period. Where are we in terms of some of these pieces of equipment for warranties or how will that work?
Are you speaking to the new equipment?
Yes.
Yes. So if there is a warranty on those pieces of equipment, that'll be incorporated into this? The, you know, the standard warranties? A lot of times what the maintenance or extended warranty is, is extending that to the life of the lease. So, and it varies. So various pieces of equipment have various warranty periods from the factory.
But it'll be as though we were purchasing it, we'd have the same warranty?
Correct, yes, yes.
Finally, it appears like this is a pretty good deal because we have, anything we get in the near future, within the next couple of months, for example, we'd have almost one year of use before we'd have any payment due.
Correct, yeah. So, yeah, the way that we have it structured is that the payments will be due the end of the year.
Thank you.
The thing that I'd like to reiterate is, of course, the fact that we have been through recessions in the past as a city, as the economy does what it does. And the Personnel and Budget Committee spent an awful lot of time discussing what the various alternatives would be in regards to making capital equipment purchases. And then we got introduced to this whole idea of this capital lease program. It's like, where was this back in 2008, 2009? When the city had to go ahead and spend monies or bond where we could've had maybe something like this to potentially use. And if I understand it correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jasper, but it seems like this was something that our Finance Director was able to go ahead and introduce to the City of La Sure.
Yeah, you know, I would say it's a combination between our Public Services Director and Finance Director. He's, Finance Director has done this in other cities that he works for. So he knows it can work, he knows how it works. And then our Public Services Director really said, we need stuff now, we need equipment now if we're gonna continue to provide.